All right. Thank you, Sheriff. It's 9:32 a.m. and I will call this meeting March the 8th, 2022 to order. And for the record, I'd like to say that Judge Jimmy Sylvia is out at training today, and Commissioner Gore has some medical issues that he's dealing with. So you've got the third string quarterback, and we will try to get through this today. If you would, please rise for the prayer. And Bobby Hallis can lead us in a prayer. Bobby, if you would, please say a prayer for Commissioner Gore, if you would.
While we come before you this morning to conduct the business of Chambers County, we just ask your guidance and your leadership, and your wisdom to be imparted to these people that make decisions here. While we lift up Commissioner Gore as he is struggling with surgery, and that you just place your hitting hand upon him, give him that patience for ensure that he's going to need something, as he's dealing with this, he won't to come back and take back the administration, and help him to deal with that. And while we've lived up, we live with our Ukraine brothers, and there are troubles there. And while we just asked you that you control all things, we asked you just go in there and take control of that situation. And Lord, again, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for this country in which we live, where we can meet, conduct the business of Chambers County. Give us your wisdom.
Mr. Tyus, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. And we have a lot of citizens' comments today. Many of them are geared towards specific agenda items. By the way, silence your cell phones.
Working on it good.
Okay, Heather Halsell. Do I need to sit this time or Heather?
No, you don't. Good morning. I just wanted to give a primary 2022 update. We had a total of 31,987 registered voters. Out of that, we had 3,157 election day voters and 4,681 early voting voters for a total of 24% of our registered voters. Today, the early voting ballot board will meet again at 10 a.m. There were 34 provisional ballots cast and 25 late ballots cast for a total of 59 ballots that they will be reviewing this morning. Our next election is our constitutional amendment election. We are hosting cities, schools, and hospital districts elections with that. May 7th, early voting will take place April 25th through May 3rd, and we will start mailing out ballots on March 23rd. The last day to register to vote for that election is April 7th. And currently, we have 32,036 registered voters. But this is what I've printed off yesterday, and I have 14 pages to go to enter still all of these people who have registered just through DPS. So our voter registration climbs tremendously by the day. Any questions? Thank you very much.
I would like to congratulate you on a very well-run election. I understand Harris County found some bucket of votes that were not counted. I'm glad we're not doing that in Chambers County. So thank, congratulations.
Thank you. While you're, while you're, I'm going to update you while we're on that subject. They have gone to the new equipment that we are supposed to go to. In June, we're supposed to retrofit our equipment with the same bender that they already retrofitted to begin with. So we're kind of doing a little standoff on that until we see what the kinks were, the issues that they had in Harris County. I know they had a two-page ballot, and it seemed that the second page was being jammed or whatever in the scanner. There are five of us from the surrounding counties that are all due to have this equipment upgrade, and we will be meeting with the Harris County team the last week of March. So we'll see. I obviously don't want to get us in the news.
Well, I can, can I ask real quick, though, the countywide voting, how many took advantage of that on election day?
So it's kind of hard to say right now because we haven't broken that down, Billy. But because it is countywide now, the only way for me to track that is to go to our polling locations and see really how many voted at sites that they usually wouldn't have voted on election day. So we'll have some more of that break down in the coming weeks. We're going to break down how many by age group, men and women. We're going to do a lot on this to just kind of get some more information out there.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Next, Austin Tyus. Congratulations, Austin. Austin is our new Republican Chair, I understand. You have three minutes.
I think we're on. We're good. Well, good morning, everybody. I appreciate your time. I'll dive right in. So there's two topics I'd like to discuss. 3.4 under Road and Bridge, regarding the MOU between Chambers County and Montgomery Estates, specifically the creation of Mud 4. This is an area I grew up, and I have had conversations with dozens and dozens of people, and many of those, you know, with people that I've known for a long time, and some that I even knew when, for 20 and 30 years, that have moved from the east side of Houston that live in a lot of those neighborhoods. And they're very concerned about the potential of this happening. To my understanding, the MOU that is on today's agenda isn't complete. I certainly haven't seen it, and I feel that citizens need time to review that and discuss before any potential vote would take place. Lastly, the subdivision should have access on an arterial road and not through an existing subdivision. You can imagine that if you were the individuals on that main road, and a lot of homes were put in the back, you'd probably be a little upset, not to mention that would require another vote or waiver from this court. So I'm here just to speak on behalf of the people that can't be, because I know there are a lot of people very concerned about how this might impact the integrity of their community. And I think one of the things that makes Chambers County great is the integrity of our communities. And so that was something that I felt like should be addressed here today, specifically for me, because it's an area I grew up, I'm very familiar with. Secondly, 5.6, regarding only on America's tax abatement. I don't think this requires a ton of detail or diving into it, but a biodiesel plant in literally the backyards of many of our residents just doesn't feel right to me. Now, I recognize that the county, because of the city of Baytown, having the ability to designate the land that was purchased heavy industrial, I recognize we don't have a lot of influence over what can be done there, but we do have influence over who we can give and incentivize tax abatements to. I'm a big believer in tax abatements. I think they're a great toolkit. But in this instance, I just want to say for the record, absolutely not should we give a tax abatement to these guys. Thank you for your
Thank you, Austin. Once again, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Mayor Ryan Dagley and Commissioner-elect, I guess, although it's not All right, next up, Mayor Ryan Dagley and Commissioner-elect, I guess, although it's not November yet, we can go ahead and say that. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm going to just piggyback a little bit on what Austin just spoke about. On item five-six, the Oleon America's tax abatement, being mayor of Beach City and being involved in Beach City for several years and knowing what's across the street with the TGS Industrial Park and dealing with a lot of tax abatements, one of the things that a lot of the citizens in my precinct and in the city of Beach City are always concerned with is what if a chemical plant comes? We deal with the warehouses and the warehouse development, but what if a chemical plant comes? And I can assure you, where this particular plant's going on Kilgore Parkway, I have a lot of concerns. I think that the citizens need to understand that Baytown zoning that land and their ETJ heavy industrial is an issue, and the only way to overcome that issue is to go to the city of Baytown and have a good conversation with them to be good neighbors, just like you ask private industry. And we need to really approach the city of Baytown and their city council and to recognize that we, unincorporated Chambers County is drawing towards them, and we understand that. And they may, may want to rethink some of their ETJ zoning and zoning stuff. We're going to, Chambers County is going to have a project that's going to widen Kilgore all the way to thirty-one eighty, and they're going to do a road widening project. And the last thing I think the citizens that want are going to use that road daily is to have this plant on that road with eighteen wheelers going onto a road that we're building as an interconnector between one forty-six and Chambers Town Center and the Cove and the Mount Bellevue community. I think that's important. I know we can't stop it. The only thing we're looking at is an abatement, but I think if you unincentivize that abatement, maybe they'll go site select somewhere else. Secondly, the, the MOU for the three point four, I understand it's not, 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 not fully done yet. And like, like Mr. Teich just said shortly ago, I truly believe that having that MOU complete and having all the facts is extremely important to be able to present to the citizens of that area. I think that the developer securing a secondary route onto, onto a main road is important to have before we consider going forward to see if they can even test feasibility, if they can gain that access. I think we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit on the MOU. And I think, I think being able to have that understanding and have those facts to present to the citizens in precinct two and Mr. Teich's precinct, going to, going to those citizens, hearing their concerns and working out that MOU before it's approved by court, is, is extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, Mayor. Larry Moore, do you want to hold to your agenda item or do you want to go ahead and speak now? You sure might.
Acting Judge Combs, Commissioners, Bobby Hall. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Larry Moore with the E.C. Two topics I'd like to touch on real quickly. First is, I have provided to the court another listing of lane closures on FM fourteen oh nine on I-ten, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that we will be closing main lines and frontage roads most of this week, weather dependent. The second topic is item three point two, change order twelve for Texas Sterling. I'm here to answer any questions.
I, we'll, we'll, we'll hold you when that agenda item comes up in case somebody does have questions at that time. You don't mind hanging around.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Right.
Larry, have they sent out that abated list for the lane closures?
Yes, I provided that to y'all last week.
Last week, okay.
Yeah.
Rachel, do you want to speak now or to your agenda item? Okay. And Chuck Russell now or to your agenda item?
Okay, thank you.
And Russell will be speaking to three point four.
Absolutely. And I, I would just also ditto both Austin and Brian's comments on the other two things, but specifically, I, I just got a copy of the MOU concerning the three point four with the Mud District coming in and just some concerns. And I didn't realize this isn't complete, so I'm glad to hear that it's not complete because I think the residents out there desperately need to see what exactly is going in. But some questions that I had on this that maybe will be addressed when you hit this item, I noticed in here it talked about promises that the company had made, and there's no, nothing really in here that I see that itemizes promises that they made in here. I know it speaks a lot of using the word high-quality housing or high-quality development, but there's nothing in here that kind of explains what high quality is considered. And I don't, I don't know that our residents are, you know, upset at what comes in because people can do what they want to if they want to build a subdivision. I just think the accessing into our subdivision and some of the other stuff, when we start talking about drainage and all that, we did go out and meet with the Mud District Committee off the road into the woods, and they tried to explain a couple of things, but some of the concerns were, were not really addressed. Some of the stuff that they talked about was that when we were asking questions about drainage and all that, they said they, they hadn't even come to that, but yet in this, in this MOU, it talks about that they've already provided a lot of stuff to you guys, and, and we don't really know that. I'm looking here at where it says here, they've already, they've already provided further clarification on anticipated stormwater fallout, general, general drainage ingress, egress of roads, sewage drainage and all of that stuff, but yet when we talked to them, they said none of that was even done. When we also brought up the, the plaits that, that we had been shown, they just kind of laughed and said that was a cartoon. And so it really sets us to thinking, well, what are we really doing? You know, they're saying that they're looking into things, but yet they're, they're proposing five hundred homes and they call it a cartoon diagram. Again, high quality, there's some concerns on Hackberry Gully. It talked about that that's going to be, I guess, where their water treatment plant comes out at. And I guess I was wondering if where it comes out at, are they not already responsible from where it comes out down Hackberry Creek to go into Cotton Bio? And it says here that they're promising to donate, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or up to a hundred thousand dollars to do some of that work. And I'm thinking, well, aren't they not responsible already for all of that work from where they, they come out from their treatment place all the way down to Cotton Bio? Just something I, and I don't understand all of that. But I think what concerned a lot of our citizens when we met with them was questions that we were asking, they kept referring to them as first inning questions or eighth inning questions, and they kept saying, we're just in the first inning, and you guys are adding, asking eighth inning questions. And our concern is, we don't want to wait till the eighth inning. You know, so we, we need to know upfront and kind of like, like they said before us, we need to have what's going on out there, and that would ease our minds. It would let us know what we've got and possibly give us a say-so minute. But thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Okay, Brent Nicholas. Okay. You have to forgive me. I'm not used to trying to sort all these papers out here. There's a lot of them. Okay, Darlene McPherson, five points. You've got several in here. Do you want to wait your agenda items? Okay. And then Julia, you want to wait. Bobby, you want to wait. Larry's already spoke. Yes, we can go to six one if you need to get out of here. Hang on just one minute. Okay, we'll move down to agenda item six point one, and we'll hear from Ms. Julia Hall.
I think in your pocket, you received a flyer for our event with First Baptist Church Anawak and First United Methodist Church. We're coming together on April sixteenth.
Hold on one, one second. I did not read the agenda item. Okay, six point one, discuss and consider park use agreement application from First Baptist Church of Anawak for use of Fort Worth, Fort Anawak Park on April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two for their community Easter event. Now, I'll start your time all over.
Within that request, we are asking for the safety of children. Our Frost Festival had over three hundred individuals and it was on our grounds at the church, but with the combined churches and opening to the community, we're hoping to have about eight hundred. So we're asking that, if you look at the map that was provided to you and locate Chambers Drive, you have the pavilion, the Gator Pavilion, and the Big Pavilion. We're asking that Frost Road right there between the Gator Pavilion and the Children's Playground be closed, and the Oak Road outside the restaurant area and the old high school football, baseball, baseball, as well as Oliver Road between the two areas be closed in order to have a smooth transition from all the areas. We're having large activity games, small activity games, and we have eight thousand eggs to put out. So we're, of course, everybody, all of you, please come. Now, we do have eight thousand, okay. But we are requesting that those roads, this does not mean that the park is closed to the community. They can still come in on the north side at Frost Road as well as Chambers Drive to get to the boat ramps. We're also going to have some educational events such as learning how to fish, cast nets, and things like that with the students. Easter egg hunt starts at one o'clock. So we would appreciate your agreement to have those roads closed, and we do have Combs for that and someone in the gallery over there can take you over. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bobby, you were signed up for it also. Do you want to speak to?
She did a pretty good job, I think.
All right, well, we could give you your time. Samantha, you want to speak to the agenda?
Sure. So I put it on the court just to help out Bobby and Julie. The only reason we're doing a park use agreement is because they are asking to close a couple of roads. They're not restricting access to the park. However, Bobby, I believe we decide, we talked and said that the playground will be restricted because of that event. So anytime you restrict access to any amenity in a park, it triggers the need for that park use agreement. They have a well-thought-out plan, and I don't see any issues with it at all, and I think it's a great opportunity for our community to come together.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the court?
No, sir.
Entertainer motion? Okay, motion by Commissioner Teich, second by Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Can we come on, age?
All right. I'm going to jump up to three point four. We're going to go ahead and take care of that item if you could. Okay, well, never mind. We won't go to three point four, Commissioner. Teich wants to hold this item. Okay, three point one is going to be tabled at this time. You want, no, does it need to be tabled or pulled? Pulled. Okay, we're pulling three point one. And we'll move on to three point two. Discuss and consider approving change order number twelve to Sterling Delaware Holdings Company, Inc. for Chambers County FM fourteen oh nine project in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventeen cents. Court.
This is one of the last, well, hopefully this will be the last change order on, on the roadway portion, this cleaning up. This, I believe about a month ago, we talked about kind of a last one to kind of clean up some items, and this is it. I said, I think it would be about twenty thousand dollars. It was a good guess. So anyway, this is it. It's got some, just some cleanup items on it. Any questions?
Any questions? Did you want to make a comment on Larry or you just here for questions?
No, sir. I'm here for questions.
Okay. Oh, entertain a motion.
I'm sorry. What's the relocated electrical services? So is that continuation of the light fiasco?
Yes, sir. In, in stereo there.
Any update on the light situation? Illumination?
Yes, sir. There is an update. Center Point came by a week or so ago, ready to install the meters. They now noticed that there was a conduit between the meter box and the power box. Apparently, they didn't notice this previously. And according to their criteria, that conduit needs to be metal. According to Texas dot criteria that were, that was in the bid documents, that conduit should be flexible. Center Point now has told us that they are not going to put meters on the three locations until that flexible conduit is changed to a rigid conduit. The rigid conduit is per Center Point's requirements. We've notified Texas Sterling, and they are in discussion with their subcontractor who did the service pole installation, and we're waiting for them to tell us that they're going to change out the flexible conduit with a rigid conduit.
Would that be an extra change order?
No, sir.
There's also another line item here for electrical service, TYD. Not sure what that is.
So. To be determined.
TYD.
Okay, that's, that's the relocation. Again, that was a Center Point request to relocate the service pole.
But it wasn't a request. It was a demand.
Yes, sir. Before they would install the beat. Once the meters are installed, then the lights will go on.
So another month or so, maybe. How many months has this been for?
I believe that we made the original request in June.
That's correct.
I just want everybody to know that. About eight or nine months, so we still can't get the lights turned on.
It's been a while.
Yeah. Completely ridiculous.
All right. Any, any more questions or discussions? Entertainer motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hammond, second by Teich. All in favor?
All right.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Since we're on Road and Bridge, we'll continue down to three point one, discuss and consider Road and Bridge update from three point three, I'm sorry. Discuss and consider Road and Bridge update from Ryan Dodge Road Administrator.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I was asked to provide an update to y'all. It wasn't about a month ago. I provided you a pretty good, solid list of planned projects for this, this calendar year that we were going to be working on, but we do have some challenges ahead of us that may curtail some of that work and put us back. So I just wanted to give you all the heads up on what's coming our way. The, we have two yards that we're going to have to shut down this year. One is the Winnie Yard. I think we're supposed to be out of there this summer. And then the other one is the Mount Bellevue Yard, which we're moving into the West Side Complex with that yard. That, that's going to be a considerable amount of material that we're going to have to move, as well as some buildings and some asphalt storage tanks, and also install asphalt storage tanks and a, and a heavy equipment lift in the, in the West Side Complex. None of these have been, have been procured yet, so they're just coming down the pack, and that will slow us down our planned maintenance work for this summer. We'll be heavy into the asphalt season here starting pretty soon as it warms up, and, and all of these are, are timing in along with that. So I just wanted to give you all a quick update that the next time we get together, I'll make sure that y'all have an updated planned project list for Road and Bridge Maintenance. And that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Question?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate the weekly updates you give us.
Thanks, Brian.
Y'all, y'all haven't met, no one's met Brian Dodge. We'll, we'll, we'll break protocol here and introduce Road and Bridge Administrator, Mr. Brian Dodge. There will be no dart thrown in the courtroom, though.
We saw him last time they gave him a report about.
We, we saw him last time they gave him a report about.
Brian Dodge, uh, Road Administrator for Roden Bridge.
All right, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet y'all, man. Call me if you need anything.
Okay. There's no action to be taken on the three point one, or excuse me, three point three, thank you, Brian. Uh, it is ten o'clock and we have two public hearings, so I'm going to uh recess out of regular session at ten oh two AM and open up for a public hearing. On, I, I on five point two, uh, public hearing at ten AM regarding the renewal of redesignation of renewal, redesignation of Borson Man- Manusman Pipe USA two thou, U- USA Inc. twenty thirteen reinvestment zone. Uh, BJ?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Um, this, this item uh is required to, to follow up on the application that was presented by Boris and Manesman to renew their reinvestment zone that was established in two thousand thirteen. As noted, uh, the notices were properly provided uh via paper and posting and uh is required us to prepare for the pursuit of the potential tax abatement with the county. Statute done to chapter three twelve requires that uh reinvestment zones are renewed on a five-year basis. All right, any comments?
Are there any uh comments as to five point two? Yes, ma'am, if you would, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record. And you did sign up on this item, didn't you, darling? I thought you did.
Yes. Commissioner Judge and, and Whitey Collins uh and Commissioners. There's, yeah, there's somebody missing and um citizens. Um, I do not believe we should offer any more tax abatements. We need to have a moratorium until we get something in return. From Highway one forty-six to Highway thirty-one eighty, industry is encroaching on the residents. Now, some of these things that we need to get in, in return are things like um we need to control light pollution and noise pollution. As a retired engineer, I can tell you right now that I have done projects where I have been required to control any light spillover from any industrial park or any industry outside the boundaries of that that complex where that industry is before this uh Borison or anybody else gets another tax abatement. They need to give us something return, in return, like control the light pollution, control the noise pollution, control the traffic. They have a direct route to ninety-nine. They should be required to use it for all of their traffic. I am totally against this for those reasons because our residents who live between one forty-six and thirty-one eighty are being rolled over and their homes are losing value because of the encroachment of industry.
Thank you. Any other comments? Being done, it is uh ten oh five AM, we will uh adjourn out of the uh public hearing and open back up into regular session. And we'll move down to five point three, discuss and consider order renewing re-designating the Borison Madison Pipe USA Inc. twenty thirteen reinvestment zone, BJ.
Thank you, uh, Judge Commissioners. Uh, this is an action that uh renews uh and re-designates the Borisman Nestman Pipe US Incorporated two thousand thirteen reinvestment zone. Uh, as stated in the recitals, um, the court has, has adopted tax payment guidelines uh on February twelfth, two thousand thirteen, the court designated the zone originally associated with the, the tax abatement in accordance with chapters three twelve, two oh three, and three twelve four, one of the code designation of reinvestment zone, the tax abatement expires five years, but doesn't affect uh existing agreements. Uh, the zone expired February eleventh, two thousand eighteen. The request to renew uh is going to be effectuated by this order so that um Borisman Nestman can uh pursue potential tax abatments in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Comments? And I, I will add that this is not approving a tax abatement today, and I would like to make a comment to you, darling. I agree with you one hundred percent, and we have been working and actually, uh, Mr. Dagley standing behind you, the mayor, we've been working relentlessly with Cedarport and they are cooperating, you know, where this plant is located. It does not bleed over, you are correct. They do have direct access to ninety-nine a- and they are using it. And, and you know, uh, working with BJ, we have been working on a lot of the issues you brought up and they are very valid issues. I personally live there. I mean, I understand. As does, you know, uh, the guy will fill my seat after this, and he's currently mayor in Beach City. We hear you, we appreciate the public involvement. And I can assure you, in my remaining nine months, I'm gonna continue to work to try to keep the separation. And I'm glad to hear you say as an engineer, you've had to design these things to stop bleed over. We have not used the words bleed over in the past, but you know, I, I think that's a good way to look at it a- and it is appreciated. Any other comments? I will entertain a motion. Okay, motion by Commissioner Tice, second by Commissioner Hammond. Any further discussion? All in favor? Now, it is ten oh eight AM, we will recess out of uh regular session and go into a uh public hearing for item number five point four. Uh, public hearing at ten AM regarding the proposed Chambers County Parkway Transportation Reinvestment Zone. BJ?
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, this is a public hearing that's required pursuant to uh section two twenty-two one oh seven of the Texas Transportation Code to get public notice. Uh, whereby the court is on considering formally pursuing the creation of a transportation reinvestment zone. Um, there are three, are two items that need to be addressed in uh today's uh public hearing, whether or not to, to the court for the county to take formal action to decide whether or not to create a transportation reinvestment zone or a TRZ as known as authorized by law to promote one or more infrastructure projects to be located within Chambers County. Those projects have been noted in the boundary map that's been attached to the public notice that was posted over thirty days ago. Um, the second action will be to approve the potential boundaries or requirements of TRZ as per the uh section two twenty-two Texas Transportation Code. Uh, we'd like to answer the questions associated with transportation reinvestments of stuff may occur.
All right, now, this is a public hearing and uh I think uh we had a- a- any comments from the uh public? I think, darling, you had signed up to maybe you didn't, oh, you're five point six. A- any comments? If you would, please.
I'm sorry. I stepped on some more. I don't think this is all, is it? Yes, it is. Okay. Uh, I signed up on all of these and basically it's the same comment. And you acknowledged it and I appreciate that and I appreciate the work you and Mr. Dagley are going to do for those residents on that, that are out there. They have beautiful, large homes with a lot of land and that their values are going down because of various things, and there are solutions. And I don't mind working with you guys if um, if you guys want to give me a call. I don't mind working with you because I've done a lot of projects like this where we had, we had to, uh, we had to abate light and noise. So, uh, that's why I signed up on all of those. Uh, so except the OAN, and that was the same comment that Mr. Tice made earlier. Uh, Mr. Austin Tice made earlier is we don't need a chemical plant in the midst of our residences. Over the past two months, I've talked to those, those people who live out there a lot, and they have some very real, strong concerns that need to be addressed.
Thank you. And I will remind you, everyone, that this is not concerning an abatement. This is for the county's uh reinvestment zone for road infrastructures. Okay, any, any other comments to the uh Chambers Parkway Transportation Reinvestment Zone? Being done, it is ten eleven AM and we will adjourn out of the uh public hearing and reconvene in a regular session, and we're moving down to item five point five, discuss and consider uh hearing, public hearing regarding Chambers regarding adoption of the Chambers Parkway Transportation Reinvestment Zone, BJ.
Thank you, Commissioners, Judge. Um, again, this is, the next step is required by statute is to schedule another public hearing. Uh, given that um, uh, there's a comment that's been allowed, just further refinement with respect to the values that are uh officially captured within the boundaries of the TRZ. And then looking at the best case and worst case scenarios related to revenue generation uh to further refine the uh costs of the, the proposed projects and the like uh that are gonna be funded by the TRZ or partially funded by the TRZ. Um, and so the public notice has to be published at least thirty days prior to the, to the court taking action. Um, so I would recommend, we've been working with the Texas Transportation Institute, that uh the May eighth court would be the date that the next public hearing be uh held to formally present the findings, the revenue findings, and then establishing the base year for the TRZ, which in this case will have to be twenty twenty-two uh for the base year, and then the term of the TRZ can be anywhere from fifteen, twenty, thirty-five years. Um, the boundaries of the TRZ can be expanded but not uh diminished or decreased once it's adopted. So maybe there's some additional work to look at uh some potential value that could be captured in the boundaries of boundary refinements that can be presented to court in the interim prior to the May eighth court.
Okay. And I don't know if everyone is very clear on what this TRZ exactly how it would work or not, so. I, I will, I will actually ask anyone in the public if you have, if you don't know, maybe we get BJ to explain further as to what it would do.
Yeah, I think I, it's in the slide. Did you guys hit the slide?
This one right here?
Yeah.
Uh, can, can we get it on that and then turn it around? Can we toward, turn it toward the uh audience a little bit? You can see that.
Yeah, this is a, this is a, an overview of how tax increment uh works. Typically, uh, there's a, a base year that's established, in this case it will be twenty twenty-two. Uh, there's a base value that's established and agreed to, and any increment which is illustrated in the uh blue uh quadrant, if you will, can be captured uh over time and allocated for funding transportation projects. It's as simple as that. So you have a, a base, uh, in this case, the preliminary values that have been identified in the fifteen hundred or so acres in a, in a targeted uh uh area is about forty-eight million dollars, and that would be the base. We need to fur- further refine that. And as the value increases, the incremental increase can be allocated towards servicing debt or contributing or allocating those uh
A, a portion of, not the entire thing.
Up to sixty-five percent.
Right.
Up to sixty-five percent of the tax increment can be uh allocated for funding transportation projects. So there's no tax increase or anything like that, simply allocating and designating or earmarking. Um, your value captured, as is noted in the first blue box uh to the right, that captured a raised value uh over time and then designating and allocating those dollars from transportation.
Do we have a map that we can put up of the uh proposed area?
Yeah, it said it should be um in the packet.
In the uh Commissioners' port.
Actually, it is.
The map?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not on mine. Okay, it's on page number um. God, his screen's so big, I can't. It don't, oh, it's page sixty-eight, I'm sorry. I'm used to looking at my little buddy. Okay. It, it's the area in blue.
Yes.
And, you know, I think it's very important to note that the vast majority of that area is vacant land, undeveloped land. So, uh, it would not overlay very, very few existing structures, so it's the increase and by getting these roads in promoting development in that area, which would go for paying for the roads that we would put in.
And also accelerate the increase of value, because it's really under the better, having the thoroughfares uh completed, which promotes development, which promotes increased tax value, which promotes increased increment.
Which means we can get a road to it that we need. Okay.
Virtuous chain reaction.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion for setting the uh next public hearing date, May eighth, at ten AM. All right, motion by Commissioner Hammond, second by Commissioner Tice. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, BJ. Let's see, we got. Let's uh, let's go ahead and finish with BJ lines here.
My, yes.
We'll move on to item number five point six, discuss and consider Oleon Americas Inc. Tax Abatement Application, and we do have a couple of uh people signed up for this. And BJ, for wood, I'd like the people to speak before you start the project.
Yeah, if I make a question, the, the, Oleon decided to retract their application.
Okay.
And, you know, just to move forward with the development of the project. Um, and so there's, you're in the mood, and I, the, the two items that came up for discussion from court uh related to the um zoning designations, I think would be wise to share it this morning. You know, the uh heavy industrial zoning designations that exist in the Baytown Park um were adopted in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen uh related to a limited purpose annexation between a city of Baytown and uh CCID number three.
Right.
Uh, and then two thousand, well, that was in two thousand twelve. In two thousand thirteen, the city refined its Unified Land Development Code in which codified the heavy industrial and light industrial uh designations in that park. So, um, the, the use is allowed in that park, uh, and so obviously it's up to the court's discretion to uh approve or not approve or even entertain or not entertain a tax abatement application, but as it stands around now, Oleon wants to expedite, move forward, you know, with their project and uh for future projects in, in the future that may or may not be in the Baytown, they expect to continue to have a harmonious relationship with the county, so they can check their.
Okay, in that case, anyone signed up for five point seven still wish to speak? All right, thank you, BJ. Okay, oh, excuse me, that was five point six. Thank you, uh, Commissioner. So now we'll move to five point seven, discuss and consider P A C P L one. Is that Pro Pump, Propco, Propco LLC Tax Abatement uh agreement, assignment to N N N O P P. The fourth owner to LLC. Okay.
That, that, that's the way it goes. Um, say it twice. Commissioners, you, you, you may recall that, that the uh the court approved the assignment uh of the agreement that was uh um between the, the county and P A C P L one Propco LLC. Um, and um, the assignment has been effectuated as noted in the cover letter from Judge Sylvia. Uh, there are two resolutions that would, that need to be approved uh today. That resolution approving the assignment of all the rights and obligations that accrue, typically accrued to P A C P L one Propco LLC under that tax abatement uh as previously approved and amended. You recall, this, this agreement was amended uh to, to facilitate the um leasing of the facility to Webster. Um, and so in the recitals, all that is noted, and uh so simply uh before you right now is a resolution that's presented for approval that embodies the, the assignment of the agreement, and then a consent and a stopple that, that further verifies who the parties are associated with um P A C P L one Propco LLC, uh, the N N N for owner to LLC, known as Apollo, and the county, so uh simply administrative actions that need to be taken by the court.
And you sure say that a lot better than I do. Okay, any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Hammond. Second by Commissioner Tice. All in favor? All right, motion carries. Five point eight, discuss and consider Houston Transloading Partners LLC Tax Abatement Application.
BJ. Commissioners, this application is being presented for consideration by Houston Transloading Partners One LLC, which is an affiliate organization of N F I. One of the sort of preeminent national logistics managers, if you will, three P L companies in, in the country. They have, are anticipating two projects in Cedarport. This is a greenfield project. Currently, right now, they are going to be leasing the exterior building that was formerly owned by Clay as part of their first phase, their second phase or greenfield development is spelled out in the cover letter. They intend to build a hundred eighty thousand square foot industrial transload facility on forty acres in Cedarport Industrial Park. All the amenities that are associated there. They anticipating creating three hundred, up to three hundred full-time jobs. They are asking for consideration of a ten-year tax abatement. Obviously, this is the first step is to accept today's and start the consideration for the court. They've completed the, the application and we've done the assessment with respect to the treaties of the entity. This is a legitimate operation. And so what's presented today is the to the court is to accept the application and start the consideration process.
Okay, and Darlene McPearson, you had signed up for this and I do apologize, you had signed up for one before. And five point seven, I did not give you a chance to speak to that. So feel free to. Would you, are you going to speak to this item? You're, you're not, so, all right. I'm gonna put you to the microphone if you want. All right. Any, any questions on five point eight for BJ? Discussion?
Yeah, so. I don't have too much appetite for ten-year abatement for warehouse. So I think those, I think that's not that beneficial to our employment stats. And BJ and I have discussed this a few times about the employment deal. So I think the majority of those jobs are not coming out of Chambers County. And also, I think any abatement there needs to be, they need to invest something back either toward our drainage program or road program or something. So I wouldn't consider a ten-year abatement for them.
Also, in, in concurrence, looking at that warehouse space, I mean, some abatement would be good, maybe a two, three year top, but I concur with Commissioner Hammond. And take that position there. BJ, if we can address that, revisit.
Yes, this is, you know, starts per the guidelines, the acceptance of the application starts that back and forth. And so this will.
I should, I should have mentioned that to you in our phone call about Oleans yesterday. My position with that as well, but I was so focused on that, BJ.
Okay, so today we was forced to accept the application. We are not approving the application. But I think it has been noted that there's not much of an appetite for a ten-year abatement on that. All right, any further discussion? Any motion? Motion by Commissioner Tice.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hammond. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, BJ.
All right, thanks, Commissioners.
All right, we're going to jump back up to three point four. Discuss and consider approving memorandum of understanding between Chambers County and Montgomery Estates LLC regarding the creation of Chambers County Mud Four. The Montgomery Estate Subdivision Development Standards Utilities Drainage Subdivision Amenities and Other Related Subdivision Development Matters. Commissioner Tice.
Yes, sir, Judge. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to commend Commissioner-elect Dagley and Austin for their presentation. I wholeheartedly agree with that. There's been a lot of misinformation out there. Nathan, Brandon, Marty, I've got counsel here that I've visited with. Nathan, are you handy?
You know what? We have, we do have two people sign up to speak on this matter. Yeah, let's let them. Rachel Isler, would you like to step up and introduce yourself to the record?
Yes, Rachel Isler, and I'd just like to say it's good to be back in Commissioners' Court. So I wanted to get clarification concerning the misinformation and misunderstandings. I watched back the previous Commissioners' Court where Commissioner Tice, you did speak on that. And so what I was asking for today is clarification on what the misinformation is. And then also, I wanted to ask about the details that changed between the November resolution that the Commissioners' Court did pass and then rescinding the resolution last month in February. What, what exactly did change? So that citizens can just understand more about the process and what is happening with the development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isler, and Brent Nicholas. You would state your name for the record.
My name is Brent Nicholas. I live in the neighborhood on the main strip. Since all this has come around, my phone has blown up more than you ever will know. So speaking for the neighborhood, we have a lot of kids in the neighborhood. We have a lot of people that are already running up and down the main drag. They came in the other day and put in the culvert. My phone blew up about that, which y'all's phone blew up about it. And they're already not putting in the culverts in the right amount, you know, you, you, the flow of water is not going to flow the way it is right now. I, you know, as a fire, fireman, I retired from Mount Bellevue and I gave ten years of service before I blew out my back. I can tell you when you put five hundred homes and you have one access in there, there is absolutely no way that we're going to save citizens. Somebody is going to get hurt severely. Kids are going to get hurt severely. We're going to have more issues with having this in there from a safety standpoint. We're going to have more issues from, you know, they won't let us take over our H O A right now. And they, they put it in place where we could take it over and have talked to people, but they're still holding that H O A. And they're holding it because they can do what they want to with it and they're using it against us. They have promised things to all of the citizens and sold property for higher values so that they didn't butt up to anything. And then they've turned around and done what they wanted to. I see this is, they're making promises to y'all, but they're not going to stay with their promises. And they're, they're tearing up that neighborhood and sold to all kinds of people on a promise and they're rescinding on their promises. So I see it as a safety issue for the kids, for the houses. And I, I, what I, I feel like at one point in time, whenever our H O A finally does take over, it's going to be our responsibility for all the construction that goes through there. And when they tear up the roads, we're going to want to be the ones that are paid for. So we're going to get it in the front end and the back end. So.
Appreciate it. Commissioner, do you mind with that, Corey?
Yeah. So can I, can I answer some of his questions a little bit? Okay, so one thing, just at the end, you mentioned, I guess, the H O A responsibility versus the developer. And true, those, the H O A is still under the developer at this point. And in addition, the roadways still belong to the H O A in general. At the wish I had looked at the date, but at some point, these roads are specified to become county roads taking over. So as far as the H O A having to maintain those roadways in the future, those would, you know, that would be a county responsibility once we take those over for maintenance in sometime, at some point in the future. Just talking a little bit about, I guess, where we've come back in November timeframe, when this came on the, I guess, up on the radar, as you could say. I, I didn't know anything about it. There'd been no communication. Normally, we know about, you know, something at least, you know, there's been some type of development review, something that's come through the pike and we're kind of aware, you know, they're, they're communicating with us. This one came on the radar and we didn't know anything about it. And so you know, that was, we, we initially just threw that up to, you know, basically, you know, put a stop to, yeah, stop the ball where it was at. And and then basically through the process, and I'll let Nathan talk about this a little bit, but generally kind of like we've talked about with some of these other comments and stuff like that, what control the county really has versus what we don't. For instance, like in zoning and everything else, we, we have limited control. So we were trying to work through the process to, to gain as much control as we could, gain as much understanding to work, hopefully trying to get them to work with us instead of against us, just doing whatever. And I guess at this point, I'll, I'll let Nathan probably talk about the process a little bit more about legally speaking where we're at. And then I can answer some more other questions. But just before that, just the, the whole point is you talked about the, the driveways and stuff like that. Your, your phone blew up, my phone blew up as well, Commissioner. Everybody was, we're, you know, and I've talked to you, I've talked to several in your neighborhood. And my thing is, well, they can try to do what they, they're going to do, but there again, it's not a county controlled road at this point. So it's a little bit limited what I can do. However, as far as them putting in a public access across the plat line going into this other location. In my standpoint legally, they can't do it. So they would have to revise the plat. So everything that we have pushed for is to have them come off of five sixty-five regardless of, of everything else. And yes, they did provide a I guess, a picture that was in the overall documents that was submitted back in February. We, we did not approve anything at that point. It was just something they provided as an overall process. So I guess sort of that was a bit of a cartoon or something like that because it's not anything official. It's just a picture of the overall subdivision. They did show that they were tying into your subdivision, but that is not the intent. The intent is to tie to five sixty-five. If they tied to y'all's subdivision, it would only be from an aspect of what you were talking about early for safety reasons, similar to what Plantation does. Where Plantation is a huge subdivision and they have a gate entrance on a back lot that's not really utilized, but in an emergency, it could be. So from that aspect, possibly, but at this point, nothing has been, there's not been any official elements. Oh, and let me just say, the other thing that we were concerned about initially was they didn't have access for the drainage system initially to Hackberry Channel. And so they have actually acquired that between November and February, they acquired that through I guess, amiable means so that, that they have that.
And Corey, it's, it's important to kind of directly answer your question. That's what happened between November and February when they, when they got access to get drainage. I knew that we were in a, we were cornered as a county. And that's where I'll bring Nathan in here, right here. When I reached out to Nathan as our counsel and said, you know, if it was up to me, we'd turn this into a bird sanctuary to be no houses. Second alternative is that I would love a subdivision that mirrored Winfrey Bio Estates now. One acre lots, acre and a half lots. That would be the perfect, perfect vision to mirror, if they want to develop, to mirror what, what, what's there now, not five hundred homes. But at the end of the day, it's their land. At the end of the day, they can take it to a point to T E C Q and take it legally. And Nathan, I would like for you to advise the citizens in here in the court, what me and you talked about at that point when we pulled that resolution and why we did after meeting with the developer and some memorandum of understanding were put together, but no plat or, or the complete memorandum of understanding is complete at all. So.
Well, and just one thing on that, that, I mean, even a bird sanctuary or however, or a warehouse or whatever ends up being over there. The county doesn't have zoning. We have, we have building codes that have to be followed. And just similar to the other situation, what is it, five seven that's on the docket, you know, that, that got pulled. We cannot give them a tax incentive, but it doesn't stop them from building. As long as they follow the code, they can do it. So that's our key. We just have to make sure that they do that. But anyway.
And, and that's, that's the key point in some of the misinformation that's going out. There's not been a plat submitted or any kind of requirement. And whatever it is, it has to meet county ordinances and codes. And yeah, I'll, I'll tell you what, Commissioner Tice, would you read from the agreement paragraph number one?
Montgomery Estates Development Agreement. Montgomery Estates agrees to develop a residential subdivision for the property of high quality that will be an asset to the Chambers County community and good corporate citizen. And such development will meet or exceed applicable county requirements.
And that does some of the things that's going out. I mean, there's really nothing that's been submitted officially as to what they would do. And our requirements do require dual access for anything that is over a hundred homes. A hundred homes or more, it does require dual access. So in order for it to be approved, it would have to meet that. But anyhow, Nathan, you want to speak to this?
Sure. I mean, there's a lot of issues raised by these comments, but I'll start with what I think everybody's mentioned on the county side, and that is the county has limited authority. That means it cannot just tell people what they can do with their own private property. They have to have a specific statute or some kind of law that gives them the authority to do that. And in the case of the county, they have very limited authority on what they can do with drainage and roads and subdivisions. Whatever authority they have, they try to obviously exercise that authority. And they do it with these new neighborhoods and these subdivisions and these developments that we've been talking about. I can assure you, having represented the county for as long as I have, that your, your commissioners, your engineers, your attorneys that work for the county are all concerned about safety. They're concerned about road use. They're concerned about drainage. They're concerned about building too many houses and too little space, all those things they are concerned about. And whatever authority they have to enforce, they do it. Okay, with respect to this development. The developer here did not have, you know, a lot of meetings with the county and they started to apply for approval with the T C Q, which is a state entity to allow for the development of mud four. When the county realized what was going on, they said, wait a minute, guys. We need to sit down and meet with you to discuss the things that we're all concerned about because whether or not there's a reason for concern or not, we still need to talk about it to make sure that you guys are going to meet our regulations with respect to the new development. That you're concerned about safety as we are. You're concerned about drainage as we are, and we've got a plan in place moving forward before this development starts. We were unable immediately to have that meeting. So as a result, we filed an objection, if you will, with the T C Q, which is a, our, that, that's a right that we have as a county to say before you approve this development and before you approve this mud, know that we object. Okay? So that's where we stood back, I guess, in January, February period. That the developer knew we objected, they didn't like that. They needed to remove that objection. So it brought them to the table. When they, when they were brought to the table, we worked out a current plan, which was not complete, it has not been approved. Plat has not been approved, but kind of a statement of intent of the parties. What we call that is an M O U, a memorandum of understanding of what the developer was going to do going forward. The idea and the intent was the developer was going to obviously agree that he was going to comply with our subdivision regulations. That they were going to improve drainage in the area. They were going to contribute, I think, up to a hundred thousand dollars to, to help clean out some, I think that goalie, Hackberry goalie, if I'm not mistaken. They were going to, they were going to build some detention ponds, allow for some recreational fishing and some other things to make this development, you know, something that we could all be proud of here in Chambers County. you know, something that we could all be proud of here in Chambers County. Nothing's been approved, no plat's been approved, there's been no final plat. It's just a start, a statement of intention. That document is before the Commissioners' Court today to approve or disapprove. But either way, whether they approve it or disapprove it, we can have an amendment to the M O U, we can have a separate M O U, we can have fifteen M O Us if we want. I mean, it doesn't really matter. At the end of the day, the developer is going to propose a final plat to your engineer and your engineer is going to have to approve it. And before the engineer approves it and the Commissioners' Court approves it, they're going to look at things like safety. They're going to look at things like the roads and what kind of quality they were built, or if they were built in general disrepair. They're just going to say, we're not going to approve this plat. They're going to look at drainage, they're going to look at all these things that you're concerned about, rightfully so. And they're going to say, did we implement this? Did the developer put this into, into place? And if he doesn't, then it's not going to be approved. So that's, you know, a lot, a lot of meat to the bone, so to speak, but there's a lot going on right now. It's not finalized. There's been no plan that's been finalized. We're just starting the process going forward.
That's correct, Councilor.
And technically, we don't need an M O U. I mean, correct. At the end of the day, they're going to submit the, their proposals and it is going to have to meet the county specs or it's not going to.
I think that, so to answer your question directly, you don't have to have an M O U. There's nothing by law that requires it. The benefit to the M O U is there's a lot of concern, rightfully so with this development, right? And we've heard it from our constituents and we've heard it from the residents that live nearby, we've heard it from the taxpayers. And we live in that precinct and we know about it. We have concern. So the nice thing about an M O U is, hey, let's put some stuff on paper that expresses the intent so that we can start talking to our constituents and the taxpayers in the community about what this developer intends to do. And it makes everybody, I think, feel a little bit better having it on paper sometimes. And so we drafted it. Can it change tomorrow? Sure.
And Counselor, when I was, reached back two months ago, that's why we put that resolution together and it did bring them to the table. And it has given us a starting point. Talking to council back in late October or early November. You know, what can I do to stop this completely? You know, I don't like a mud. There's good mud and there's bad mud. But my instincts and everything in my gut in here, it's no, no, no. But at the end of the day, when council advises you and you talk to other county commissioners in different counties across the state of Texas, there's one just about seventy-five miles west of here. About a hundred and fifty homes, a million to a million three, and Meritech Homes built not a high quality subdivision, five hundred homes touching it. I mean, this isn't, these are the things that as a commissioner, you worry about in unincorporated America. And that's why I put that resolution in place to hit the pause button to get them to the table. Because I'm fighting for each, each and every one of us every day. And according to my tax statements, as far as my property values, I bought some two decades ago, my property values three X plus. Our property values aren't being harassed by the home that I bought. In Plantation, there was no other subdivision. Those three hundred homes came in. And the reality is sometimes growth is not wanted. I'd love to have turned the porch light off and locked the doors when I moved in, but it's out. And, and what it is, it's low taxes, great school district and a place where you can get a good career, not just a job. I'm fighting for each and every day.
Well, it really breaks protocol. I'll let you do it, but I want you to sign a public comment sheet and come up and do it as a public, as a comment on the line item. You need to fill out.
Let me, let me mention real quick, if I may, Mr. Combs, just real quick, if I may, on Mark's last point. On the mud, the county is not the governmental authority to approve or disapprove a mud. So if some developer wants to come into your county and develop a subdivision and create a mud, it doesn't then turn to the county and say, county, do you agree to this or not agree? That's not how it works. It goes up to the T C E Q and at the state level. The only thing the county can do is object and it exercises its right to object. And if the developer starts going back on his promises, then I would assume the county would do everything it can do to carry on that objection at the state level. But we don't decide anything here at the county level about the creation of a mud. That's at the state level.
Right. And so we, and just tacking on, I guess, a little bit, we, you know, that going back in November, like I said, one of the big you know, objections we had is we didn't, we didn't believe they had access to their water and for getting rid of their water and having to use condemnation to, to make that point. And so basically, we had already found out that they had resolved that. So we didn't feel like there was really anything that the T C Q, we could delay the process, but ultimately the mud was going to be created. So how do we work with them? And then I guess the other thing I just want to comment on, when you're talking about the subdivisions and this being smaller, the Commissioners, you know, back in twenty nineteen really pushed that we did not end up with another small lot subdivision that has created so many issues in the Cove area. And I won't mention names, but I think everybody knows what we're talking about. And so the street widths are much wider, the lots have gone from like forty foot up to fifty-five foot as a minimum. How many cars will have fit in a driveway? Much different. I mean, so there's, there's a huge amount of difference. And we also talk about lights, illumination, sidewalks are required. All those kinds of things are something that are, is a baseline that's required in these subdivisions at this point. And so that's all from the work of the Commissioners trying to improve the values within the limits of what we can control. So anyway, does that all hand it over?
And Mr. Russell, you had already signed up on this item. So yeah, if you would come to the microphone. And once again, state your name for the record.
Chuck Russell, and I am a resident of Tangle Wall right now, soon to be a resident of Wimpery Bio Estates. Hopefully by the end of this month, we have a house that's on, on the strip that, that comes in just past where they're doing all this. And that's
Put that straight name.
Pine Lot, Pine Lot Bio Drive. I guess, I understand, I appreciate you explaining this, this M O U. But I guess I have a concern. If it doesn't really mean anything, why the heck are we even doing it? I mean, I know you say they're making promises, but I see here in this, it specifically says Chambers County Commissioners' Court intends to withdraw its contested case hearing request, having been provided promises and agreements by these guys. So we're, we're going to drop the case. And I understand what you're saying. We're just kind of prolonging it. But who's to keep them to their promises? And, and I, I'm still trying to figure out the promises they're making in here. Are, are we alluding to the, to the things that you're saying that they're going to follow? You know, our guidelines? Are they going to have an access if we're over a hundred, a hundred homes? Are you still going to allow that? I mean, those are things. I mean, we're saying they're going to hold to their promises, but who's going to hold them to that? What, what do we have to do if they come back and they, say if they come back and don't do it? What, what can we do to stop that?
Thank you, Mr. Russell. And I, I will comment that what we'll do, they still have to get their plaits and approvals. They have to at a minimum meet the county's requirements. I mean, that is not negotiable. They have to do that. And the requirements do require dual access for anything over a hundred homes. I, the court does have the authority to make waivers, but you know, that is very rare and in between. And quite frankly, I don't see this court doing that.
Mr. Russell, as your commissioner, I will not vote to approve any of them that will not have the utmost safety involved in your neighborhood. Not have dual access.
Right, right. That is a safety concern. It was put in place for that, you know, what we don't want is something happens at one intersection, there's a fire or something, people need to be able to get out of subdivision. And it, it is a safety issue. And I don't see this court waiving that requirement, especially not if it, you know, if it were a hundred and two homes or something, it might be one thing, but you know, not when you're quadrupling it or something. Any, any other comment, Nathan?
Counselor, if you could, before we, you know, kind of put a bow on this, so to speak, could you also address the court? You know, my feeling from the very beginning, I've said it briefly early. I didn't want it to happen at all. And you said, Mark, eventually you can stop it, you can hit the pause button, you can do all these, throw these resolutions up. But at the end of the day, we're back in unincorporated America. Can you, if they, if, if a developer complies with all the agreements that the county is asking them to do, whether it be through detention, through dual entrances, through or for, and they comply with everything, touch again with unincorporated America and unincorporated counties?
Yeah. So what you're talking about is the difference of authority that municipality has versus a county. A municipality has a lot more power, a lot more authority to regulate development through zoning laws and ordinances that they pass versus unincorporated America, Chambers County or a large part of Chambers County doesn't have that sort of authority. And there's nothing we can do about it. So for example, if we enact subdivision regulations, which we have, we enact drainage regulations, which we have, and the developer meets all of those regulations, but we still don't like their development. We can't just say, well, we're not going to allow you to do that. Still don't have the authority. We'd like to. The Commissioners would love to veto a lot of the proposed development in Chambers County. They would love to say, no, you're not going to build that subdivision. You're going to build us this huge green belt with wonderful parks and basketball and volleyball. That's the only development we're allowing. We don't have the authority to do that. So if they meet our regulations, we have to. Well, what if we don't? Then we get sued. We go to court and we tell the judge, sorry, we don't have the authority that we tried to exert. And then we've got to, we've got to get out of that mess. And so nobody wants that. Nobody wants to pay taxpayer dollars to defend a lawsuit that we're going to lose, right? So we just try to exert the authority that we have as best we can. And that's what we're doing here. There was a question raised real quick about what if the developer doesn't do what he or she said they were going to do? Well, if it's in writing in M O U, that just doesn't seem like they're going to do that. They're not going to want to go to the government and say, guys, we know we promised you all these things and we signed our name to it. We're just not going to do it now. That's a hard pill to swallow, so to speak. So can they do it? Yes, they can do that. Will they do it? We're thinking not. We're thinking not. They're going to sign their name to promising they're going to do some, you know, some things good for the county that they're not going to try to go back on their promise. That's why we have the M O U. It's better than they come into a Commissioner's office and start promising verbally a bunch of things and don't even sign their name to it. And then we get hoodwinked after the development goes in, right? That's never a fun place to be in. This is the most formal way we have in our arsenal, so to speak, to get them to write down their promises and, and sign their name to it. And then we carry it forward. And at the end of the day, if they didn't meet these promises and they ask for plat approvals, they're going to have egg on their face.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Be quiet.
So I, well, I don't know where we're at on this understanding or what we think we want to go with this. But the problem I have with that is it addresses the mud in here several times and the county has absolutely no control over that. It's cloud in the water.
Yes.
And I'm not going to agree with anything that has mud in it because the mud has nothing to do with us. We have no control over it. We can't approve it or disapprove it. And it makes mention in here of the county approving the mud. And we cannot do that. And I'm not comfortable with approving anything that has a pervage in it. So I'm okay with M O U for the creation of a subdivision that we can work with those guys and give hopefully what we want and what we require for sure. We'll get that. But to keep addressing this mud in this agreement, I'm not with that. So.
We took my thunder away, Commissioner Hammond. Commissioner Tice, what is your appetite? Your precinct?
I'd say we table this and disapprove until we could sit down and with all parties involved and come up with a complete memorandum of understanding that I can bring back to the citizens. More focusing clarity.
All right. After much discussion, item three point four is tabled. Thank you. All right. Let's, is Samantha still here?
We'll get five, yeah.
Let's get five point one real quick. Okay, five point one, discuss and consider approving change order number one and the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars for the Hankamer wastewater treatment plant, G L O C D B G D R contract twenty dash oh six five dash oh oh seven dash C O one zero paid by T B C D.
That's right. So this is a no cost adjustment for us. It just has to come through court for your approval. T B C D has agreed to pay for it. Jerry Shannon's here to justify that. And, and vouch for that, I should say. It's so basically, this is just a formality. You guys approve it or not?
All right. Any questions for Samantha? Being none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Tice, second by Commissioner Hammond, all in favor? All right, we're going to take ten minutes break and we'll be back in ten minutes. It will be, okay, it's, yes, ten fifty-eight right now.
All right, it is 11:15. We will reconvene into our regularly scheduled meeting. And we're moving to item number 6.1, Discuss and Consider Park Use Agreement. Oh, we've already done that, I'm sorry. Then item one, we're going to pull. So we are down to consent, gentlemen. Commissioner two. All right, we'll move over to Commissioner three.
None, Your Honor.
Okay. And then, you got none?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, Commissioner four always has something. But last time we did. Troublemaker. On item number 20, for the Bay Ten Business Park, we are going to table that item until we get that plat redone to properly show the green belts setbacks on it. I think that's all I got. I'm going to entertain a motion on consent.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Price, second by Commissioner Hammond. All in favor? All right. And now we will go into executive session following this. For item 20.1, Discuss and Consider Personnel Issues. Item 20.2, Discuss and Consider Sale Purchase of Real Property. Item number 20.3, Discuss and Consider Professional Service Contract with Johnson Merriman and Thompson, Inc. And 20.4, Discuss and Consider Approving Chambers County Cyber Security Incident Response Plan. It is 11:17. We will recess out of the regular session. Yes, ma'am?